I'd like to call the July 10th meeting of the Pleasant Ridge City Commission to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to miss our mayor tonight, but Amy, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Here.
Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the public discussion. This is for anyone who would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the podium and give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jake Cunningham. I live at 246 Withington in Ferndale. I'm your neighborhood down in Ferndale. I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the commission. I am running for an open seat on the Oakland County Circuit Court bench. I am currently Judge Mary Ellen Brennan, Staff Attorney at the Circuit Court. The seat is going to be assigned to the Family Division, so I'm currently in the Family Division right now and looking forward to serving the community at the Circuit Court after the election in November.
Oh, that's great.
So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you for introducing yourself.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jake Cunningham.
Jake Cunningham.
Are you running against a lot of other people?
There's one other person in my race.
Okay.
So, there's no primary. I go right to the general election in November.
Okay.
That's exciting.
Yes. And skirt. Thank you.
That's great. If nobody else has anything, the next item on the agenda is governmental reports. Chief Nowak? Nope, you're good. All right.
Hey! Not a bad thing to hear.
Now we have the city commission liaison reports. I'll go first. The Planning Commission and DDA have not met since the last commission meeting, but we will be meeting on Monday, July 23rd, 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall. So, come on by. See you then. All right, next, Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
With historical?
Yes, the Historical Commission will not be meeting and has not met until September, so please join us in September for our next meeting. We'll hear about it in August. We do have an event coming up on August 9th, though, and it's a really interesting one about the different kinds of houses that we have in the city. And for those of you that know a little bit about history, some of the houses that were built in the early part of the century were actually ordered from catalogs as part of kits.
Like Sears?
Like a Sears catalog would have houses that you could buy, as well as furniture or other things. And these kit houses have quite a following to them. So, we've put together a speaker series with the Historical Commission to talk about the kit houses that are around town and around the general area. That'll be on August 9th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. Andrew and Wendy Much, the Kit House Hunters, will actually be giving us a lot of information about kit houses, and the Historical Commission welcomes everyone to come to this event. You might find out that you live in one, and you can learn a lot of detail about how your house came about, how these houses were put together and ordered, and which houses in the neighborhood fall into this category.
Is this way at the rec?
It's at the rec center.
That's really cool.
Yeah, please feel free to come on August 9th, 7:00 PM, rec center, to learn a little bit more about the history of our town and homes that were sold and made in this fashion.
Oh, that's cool.
It is cool.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Wall with recreation.
Hello! So, the camp has been going swimmingly. Kids are having a lot of fun. They went to Jump Island today. They get to do a bunch of really cool, different things. Shawnee does a great job with that. The next thing we have coming up is Adult Swim, July 18th at 7:30 at the pool. Can you believe it's at the pool? Shocking. And then we're also having our ice cream social on the 25th, which, a little plug, is my daughter's birthday. She's turning nine.
The 25th is in July?
It's July 25th, yeah.
Cool.
And it's from 6:00 to 8:00. That's always a hoot. You can get to see everybody, eat some ice cream. Next thing is on the 15th of August, 7:00 PM, Synchro Show, again at the pool.
Have they already started the Synchro Show rehearsals? Like, can people still sign up?
I think that people still can sign up.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool.
And there was no rec meeting this month. It was canceled, and it is going to be rescheduled for a future date, hopefully in July. So, I'll have something to report next month.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Krzyzewski, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor Perry.
Pro town.
Pro town. Perry. No, thank you very much. Yes, the Ferndale School Board meeting was held on Monday, June 18th, kicked off with the last Eagle of the Month Award for the school year, and it was awarded to Haley Griffin. She's at Ferndale Upper Elementary School, and she's a speech teacher there, an all-around supporter of the student body at Fuel. She was awarded for her positive reinforcement for all the school's children, and she is the definition of going above and beyond. She accepted that award on behalf of her students, so a great award for Haley Griffin. The building pride, Superintendent Bazi worked on a summation of the entire school year, and there was about a four or five-minute video that she played summarizing the school year for all the district's school buildings. That was really cool. They did a lot of housekeeping. Their budget was on the agenda. They approved their budget for the 2018-2019 school year, and the FEA contract with the teachers' union was approved. And they commented that both sides understood the importance of the agreement and worked with the student body in mind. It was also mentioned that because of state-level increases in per pupil funding, that the contract was able to increase teachers' salaries in the upcoming contract. So, both the school board and the teachers' union were grateful for that. And that's all that I have from the June meeting.
Cool. Thank you, Commissioner Krzyzewski. The next item is consideration of the following consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda. One is the minutes of the public hearing and regular city commission meeting held on Tuesday, June 12th, and the second item is the monthly dispersment report. Are there any questions or comments, anybody? Could I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
A second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. Amy, could you call the vote?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Perry?
Yes. Okay, the next item we have is a public hearing. We are here, we want to solicit public comments on the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 42, the penal code. This is the city's disorderly person ordinance. Jim, would you like to say something about that?
This ordinance is being brought forward to you for a public hearing at the request of the police during their course of their daily business enforcing the laws of the city. They've identified some deficiencies in our disorderly persons ordinances. We've been working with the city attorney Greg Need over the past few months to develop these ordinances in response to what they brought to us as the issues. If you have any further specific questions, I would point them to Greg. Chief Nowak is here. He could chime in as well if you have any other detailed questions on the ordinances we're facing.
Great. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions or anything? You can come to the podium. All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. I'd like to call for a motion of the proposed amendments and additions to Chapter 42.
Mayor, I move that ordinance 433 amending the city Pleasant Ridge city code, Chapter 42, penal code be approved.
Second? Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on any of this?
Yeah.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Town. Jim, can I just give, can you give a summary of kind of why this effort was taken up? Was this something that, I know you were talking about, you worked with police officers, you worked with Greg on this. What specifically spurred this examination? Because there's, you know, there's multiple issues here. What was really the motivation here?
This is the product of probably years of note-taking and a running list that I think Sergeant Reed really was the one who took point on collating all of those issues that they've had. Just, you know, there's an incident, or there's something that happened in the city, and they didn't have the ordinance that they really would need to address that. So, we have to handle it under a general nuisance ordinance or something else that doesn't quite fit the specific bill. And none of these ordinances, and Greg can provide more detail on this, but none of these ordinances are exotic. A lot of these are things that exist in other communities that are fairly standard, I guess, in terms of local ordinances that you're finding communities all over Michigan in our surrounding area. So, that was how this came forth. So, this has really been years in the making.
Okay, but a lot of these items are things that, and you can correct me, we were already prosecuting, or we were prosecuting under different names in the past, because some of this stuff feels like, you know, we haven't been able to do these things in Pleasant Ridge, so why, you know, codify them now specifically in our own ordinance? I know there's talk, you know, a lot of this stuff's kind of covered under state or other laws. Why did you, why did we feel we had to codify these specifically in our own ordinances?
Well, our disorderly person ordinance was lacking many of the items that are included in this from the get-go. And like the city manager alluded to, that we would then have to write it under state. It requires a different prosecutor when we have court on our court days with Oak Park, and we contract with, you know, Gene Lumberg, his name slipped me for a minute there, where he can do these things and keep it locally. And then also part of that is that it's then at our court. So, it would typically stay at our court, but then the county or state prosecutor would have to get involved, and then it's put off farther and farther down line. Where, again, Mr. Need can elaborate further, all the cities pretty much around here have these in existence, and we've been lacking for years with things. And typically, a lot of these things stem from something after-hours around a local business, let's say the Sunoco for one reason or another, whether somebody, you know, they're not quite disruptive, but they are disorderly and disturbing the peace, and this elaborates further with that, including like the urinating in public behind the building, when there's no public bathroom there for them to use or something of that sort. It just makes it easier for us as a police department to prosecute crimes at our local court at a local level. And then I think because of that, then we see some of that funding and stuff that comes back too from the court to us rather than the state, because then it's spread out over a lot bigger field of play, and then everybody gets their cut too. But the money isn't the motivating factor of it, is that it's the part of us being able to do our job easier here.
Okay.
Can I just maybe add on a little bit? Another advantage is if we need a warrant, we can get an arrest warrant from Mr. Lumberg's office. Otherwise, our officers have to travel to Pontiac, talk to an assistant prosecutor there. It's just much more efficient and convenient.
It's more red tape, right?
I'm sorry?
It's more red tape.
Well, I'm not sure. There may be more red tape.
It's a lot longer process. Because they're a lot busier.
It's a longer process. And if you're dealing with your own local prosecutor who's familiar with the city, sometimes it's easier.
Okay.
It's a little more efficient to have it done. If you're with the county, then, you know, you'll have an assistant prosecutor who may or may not be that familiar with Pleasant Ridge. It's just a little easier.
Okay.
Same, same basic law.
I understand.
The other issue that the police department determined was that we had a lot of these ordinances, even though we had them on the books, the language was outdated, outmoded, and it needed to be amended just to bring it up to the current state statutory authorization.
And we looked at many local ordinances in other cities around here and kind of to choose what fit us, what we thought would be best.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that explanation, because, you know, I know a lot of this is stuff that is common sense, I thought, well, we're already covered here, so why are we doing this, or why haven't we? So, I really appreciate, you know, Jim's memos and stuff, you know, kind of covering the history on this, how it's been accumulating over several years, and this is kind of, you know, our opportunity to, you know, update our ordinance. So, I appreciate the work that, you know, everyone involved has done on this. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? I'd like to call for a motion on the proposed amendments and additions to Chapter 42.
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, there is? Okay, that's right. I'm sorry. Thanks. Amy, can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Perry?
Yes. All right, the next item is the Chariot Local Area Transit Program sponsorship. It's exciting to see this coming back and the evolution of this.
Yes.
Can you tell us about it, Jim?
Sure.
Thanks.
You may remember that last year, I think it was in maybe February of 2017, we'd been discussing a local area transit service, I guess.
Yeah.
It would be a weekend service. It was modeled off the K-line in the Grove's Points, which runs on Kirchville in the summertime, and it's proven to be quite popular there. The one we were working on with the city of Ferndale is the lead. Last year had included the city of Detroit, Royal Oak, the zoo, and us. That effort eventually collapsed under its own weight of too many cities and bureaucracies and requirements, and also the process of launching your own local area transit service kind of on a shoestring was daunting. So, we just kind of let it settle and gestate for a while, and sometimes, as happens, the universe pops up and provides something for you. So, Ferndale is now partnering with a service called Chariot, and this is the city of Ferndale's presentation, because they are, again, taking the lead on this, and we are partnering with them. It's just us in Ferndale at this time to simplify and streamline the service. And Ferndale is also using this in the short term during this pilot period. They're using it as a relief for their downtown while they construct their parking deck. So, this is going to help them circulate people around town and overcome some of the parking, loss of parking issues while they're under construction. So, they're doing it for that purpose and also just because, you know, local area transit circulators are something that I think a lot of cities around here are interested in. You know, Royal Oak is obviously going through their whole effort to build their own ground-up service. And so, Chariot is a company that Ford purchased. They started in the Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area, as a circulator. Ford bought them, so they're now part of Ford's Smart Mobility program, and they are launching in Detroit. So, they are now operating in Detroit. Ford's using them to circulate people around from all of the various Ford campuses. Ford's going to be using them to move people back and forth from Dearborn to the train station in Corktown as they build out their campus there. So, they provide a ready-to-go turnkey solution for us, for our local area circulator. So, they use the transit vehicles, which are branded as Chariot. They say download, book, ride. That's for the, some of the on-demand services Chariot offers and other places. This will be a free service for residents and users during the pilot period. It could be something to explore making a fee for service to continue in the future, so it's not subsidized completely by local government. But there is an app, and we'll talk a little more about that. But, you know, Chariot, the drivers are all hired and managed by Chariot, so we do not get involved in the human resources game.
Nice.
So, and they handle all of the, you know, good standard HR things you're supposed to do. And they're not contractors. They're W-2 employees, which is attractive to us. So, there is a Chariot app. You can download it. You won't really need to search a route, but it'll show you the route. It shows you where the vehicles are located, so if you're interested in riding one down to Ferndale and back, you'll know where the vehicle is. We ask, we'll be asking if this service does come, that you do go online and check in so that we know the usage.
Oh, okay.
So, that we know how it's being used and when, and basically what our ridership is. It's a way of keeping track of that. You check in beforehand and board. In our case, there's no cost. It's just pre-ticketing. So, this is all Chariot sales pitch we don't really need here.
So, wait, what did you say about the pre-ticketing?
That's, it's, when it's a fee-for-service.
Oh, okay.
It's like a bus rapid transit. You're not paying in the fare box. Once you get on the vehicle, you buy your ticket beforehand on the app, and then you just show it to the driver, and you get on and it goes. It streamlines the boarding process for some of these places where they're running not a corporate-sponsored or a city-sponsored route, but just a general transit service route. So, this is the general routing. We're still working to finalize this, but the general routing we're working with is running down Liburnoy, up, I'm sorry, down, yeah, Libernoy, they don't have the streets labeled, up Allen to the downtown, circulating on Woodward, and then it would come up Woodward. This would not be a stop here. Turning on Woodward Heights, up Indiana to Sylvan, and then this stop number 10, we've actually worked with them to move it from Oakland Park and Woodward to Hessel Park. So, you would cross Woodward, they'd come down and catch the stop here, back to Woodward and down. So, that was the Pleasant Ridge routing, and then you can ride it to All Points, Ferndale. So, it's actually a pretty short ride to get to Nine Mile and Woodward. If you're riding it for Pleasant Ridge, it'll be a very quick ride down, and then you can catch one of these stops that's on the northbound ride, and it'll be a quick ride home as well. So, the service level, there will be one vehicle running on Thursday through Saturday from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. During peak hours, Thursday through Saturday, there would be an additional vehicle running from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. So, during peak hours, there will be about a 15-minute headway, which is actually really great. Transit systems, if you're riding the Metro in Washington DC or any of the major transit systems, they aim for a 10-minute headway on their routes. That's kind of the gold standard for what you need to hit for a transit system. For a local area circulator like this, a 15-minute headway is fantastic. So, that was a big selling point to this particular program. And then during the off-peak hours, it'd be about a half-hour headway. So, from 4:00 to 5:00, and then from 10:00 to midnight, you'd have a vehicle coming by about every 30 minutes.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you wait? So, you reserve it on the app, and then do you wait? Like, people show up and you wait your turn?
Yep, so you go to a stop, just like a transit stop.
Right. And then just wait?
Wait for the car to come. But the nice thing about the app is it'll show you where the vehicles are.
Okay.
So, you'll have an idea.
Oh, cool. Now, do we have to reserve our seat, or that's just?
You don't have to.
It's a heads-up.
It's a heads-up, right. Because it's a free service, you don't have to.
Okay.
Sometimes you may have to. One of the things we've talked about with this is possibly, and this is possibly, but remember the Arts Beats in Each shuttle. We've talked about for Arts Beats in Each, launching the service with a Arts Beats in Each shuttle service that weekend, just to get people on and riding it and getting people used to it. That's a popular service, so for that weekend, you may have to get a pre-boarding ticket to reserve your place on the shuttle.
Yeah.
So, well, these are things that we need to work out the details. Once we get the funding commitment in place and once we get onboard, we'll work with Ferndale and Chariot to finalize these details.
It's great.
Yep, pretty exciting.
Yeah. So, it's actually not a six-month pilot. It would be a seven-month pilot that would run from September through the end of March 2019. And then we'll review the service. Could launch additional routes. Chariot is actually working on more of a distributed model, where you would order it, and it could come potentially pick it up at your house. So, it might have a service area. It'll be door-to-door service that they might offer. They're still working on that internally on their own end, so we don't know if or when that'll be available, but they are working on it, so it could be a possibility one day. And then they, we may run charters. So, during downtown Ferndale or even regional events, Chariot may run some additional routes. That may be fee-for-service, but if you wanted to go potentially downtown for an event that's happening there, they may be running a shuttle back and forth from the local area for you. So, those are the basics. The commitments that we had made previously were, for the Fat Cap service last year, we had committed $10,000. Ferndale has been building out this proposal in the program, assuming that we would continue with our $10,000 commitment. When we had done that last year, it was $5,000 from the DDA and $5,000 from the city. We'll be going and bringing this back to the DDA at the July 23rd meeting for their consideration for reaffirming their commitment as well. To put that in context, $10,000 for seven months of three-days-a-week service.
That's a cheap, that's a good deal.
Is a pretty small bet for something that could be, you know, a useful tool. We'll see how it goes. At the end of the seven months, we're going to reassess and figure out where to go. You know, do we make this more of a permanent thing, or, you know, do we find that it didn't get a lot of ridership? Then we took a shot at it, but it's a pretty small bet for that.
That's great.
And in context, we used to pay $3,000 for the trolleys that went back and forth to Arts Beats in Each for one weekend.
One weekend.
Such a good value.
So, this is a ton of good value for us here, and Ferndale's carrying a lot of the water on this one for getting the service going and the charges for getting it started.
That's exciting.
That is exciting.
Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that. Again, the requested action tonight is we're asking you to reaffirm the city's pledge for $10,000, $5,000 of which would come out of the general fund. And we noted that there's lines for contractual services in the general government, community development, and recreation departments. So, those lines all have monies budgeted that would cover this with really no stress on the budget.
That's great. Thank you. Does, are there any questions from the, or comments from the, please come to the podium and let us know your name and your address, please.
Larry Stifman, at the infamous corner of Sylvan and Indiana. This is a great idea. It's a no-brainer that it's a go. I endorse it 100%. Even the name Chariot, I'm thinking about Charlton Heston. However, there are NIMBY issues. The corner of Indiana and Sylvan is a four-way stop, which is basically you approach it, you look around, and you move on. No one stops on these stops. So, there's a problem with parking of the vehicle in our minds as to where it would set and where people would wait to board on, and where would they, and how would they come out. And Sylvan during the day is permit-only on that side of the street. Indiana, there's no parking. The plan is, is well, no one's going to park at that intersection, and then, because the reason they're taking the shuttle is to avoid parking at their destination, at Ernie's Sandwich Shop or on Nine Mile Road or wherever. And so, I just can't imagine that 100% of the ridership is going to be on foot to come in. We're also concerned about waiting and whether there should be some sort of bench or kiosk in the winter, especially if there's a 15-minute to a half-hour. I don't know what headway means.
Headway is just the time between vehicles.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the shorter the headway.
The better.
The better.
Correct.
Right. So, in the best-case scenario, there's a 15-minute headway.
Correct.
And the worst-case scenario, there's a 30-minute headway.
Right.
Okay. And so, the concerns are, and we don't, I polled the four houses that are proximate to the corner, and with my great powers of persuasion, they somewhat concur, okay? But I don't want to speak for them individually. But I think it's a fabulous project, especially the on-demand aspects and the Uber-like qualities, and an expansion to the zoo and to Myers. That would just, at some point in time in the future, would offer a raison d'etre to go, rather than to go up to Pop's Italian to have a pizza and then come back home. I could walk it in that time, so. So I'm 100% for it, and the issues concern parking and puking because a lot of these situations turn out to be bar shuttles. Whether we like it or not, whether we can plan ourselves to death, but this could happen. And a proposed alternative, if there's consideration that will be undertaken, would be to move it up to Woodward. Woodward and Sylvan. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comments.
If I could just add to Mr. Stifman's points, especially about the puking. We just addressed that in the previous agenda item, right? So, you can't be puking in Pleasant Ridge anymore, in public, anyways.
Well, in our name.
Right, not in public.
In the privacy of your own home, you're allowed to.
Yeah, still. For now.
Would you like me to? Sure. I have a couple thoughts.
Sure.
So, the reason that we had the two stops at Indiana and Sylvan, and then why we moved it over to Hessel Park, was those two stops being in the middle of the east side and west side neighborhoods. So, in order for this to be convenient for residents, that puts it within an easier and faster walking distance of more residents. The closer you move them to Woodward, the farther away it gets from, you know, more of the residents on either side of Woodward. These vehicles are eight-to-12-seat shuttles, so they're not large. In terms of, you know, parking issues, I'm not sure if I fully understood if your concern was the shuttle stopping and parking for people to get on. You know, I mean, it's, with an eight-to-12-person vehicle, it's gonna be a long stop at a stop sign. People are gonna get on and it'll go. I think in most cases, it won't even leave the travel lane. It'll just stop at the intersection, people will get on or off and then it'll go. But, these are, you know, part of the pilot process, I guess. Moving it from Sylvan to Woodward adds about two minutes of walking time. So, the longest walk on the east side would go from 10 minutes to 12 minutes. It's not a huge deal if we move it closer to Woodward. Moving it closer to Woodward, it would probably be closer to the alley on Sylvan. I don't know that we're, you know, we're not locked in at Indiana and Sylvan. I think what I would say is, is if you have an open mind, we try it, and if there's issues, we move it. Waiting is, you know, certainly a valid concern. You know, people are standing around waiting. That's part of the beauty of this, is there's the app that shows you where the vehicle is. So hopefully that allows people to eliminate their wait time at the stop by checking the apps. Okay, we gotta go now. And then, you know, walking and ideally having a short wait. So yeah, we could look at some other stops on Sylvan. I would suggest we try it at Sylvan and Indiana. If it causes issues, you know, if we get feedback that there are things happening, then we'll look at, we'll move it. That would be what I would suggest. But those are detail items that, you know, we can hammer out over the next couple of months while we, you know, spool up for this if we have a funding commitment tonight.
Could I sell lemonade?
You'd tell me.
Shoelaces, something.
Yeah.
It turns out in city planning theory, wherever there's a stop, it's an economic boon to the facilities. When you look at the Q stop.
Your property value is right up.
But on the other hand, city planning also might suggest that you don't put a public system on a residential corner.
But again, this is a, you know, and that's the whole thing. This isn't a regional transit system. This is, you're gonna have Pleasant Ridge people getting on and off. It is a neighborhood-oriented service for the neighborhoods.
Right.
So that's part of the reason why, you know, you wouldn't put a smart bus through the neighborhood, of course, but, you know, for a local area transit shuttle circulator, you know, you're gonna have local Pleasant Ridge people jumping on and off.
There's another added benefit to having service. I'm very pro for the whole thing. I mean, obvious, is the elderly and medical appointments is a big, ka-ching money. There's private companies that do this a lot, and Uber actually is gonna be having such a service. It's a, if there's ancillary downtime on the Chariot, it could serve people to having a lot of, there's a ton of medical offices on Woodward, as everyone knows. So that's a possibility for add-ons.
Great. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Could I get a motion regarding the funding for the Chariot?
Mayor, I move the City Commission allocate $10,000 toward the Chariot Local Area Transit Program, $5,000 of which will be contingent upon the City of Pleasant Ridge Downtown Development Authority reconfirming their contribution.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just to piggyback again on what Mr. Stifman had brought up, and I think he brought up all the salient points that I was considering and worried about, especially the location of the stop. Not so much in Hessel, because I feel Hessel is more natural for something of that nature. The Indiana-Sylvan corner, I think, would be more problematic for that, just for the reasons you mentioned. So, I'm comfortable going forward with this till March to kinda see how it goes. But I am suspicious of, or I guess not suspicious, but I'm a little leery about a long-term commitment. I feel we've committed, we committed to Ferndale in the past. I believe we're honoring that commitment now. I'm excited about the possibility here. But, we're also, and I know everybody, a lot of people in this room, I want to speak for all of us, are really passionate about public transportation, right? And we're trying to increase the public's use of public transportation. In particular, the Smart Bus Service, which Pleasant Ridge is one of the most beautifully-located communities for accessing the Smart Bus System. So what I am hoping for, and I know we've talked about this for years, right? Getting Pleasant Ridge residents to use public transportation, make it more attractable for public transportation. We see the fast buses that are now increasing service times and reliability and things of that nature. I don't want this to undermine those efforts, because I feel like putting people in nice, and I work for Ford, public disclosure, I think the Transit is a beautiful vehicle, but are we just accommodating people who, maybe they won't ride a bus with other people from around, but they'll ride a Chariot with other Pleasant Ridgers to, you know, one-eyed Bettys? Is that a service that people want? We'll see. Is that benefiting the transit options for the region? I don't know. Again, I'm willing to see how it plays out. I don't want this to be a drain on people's enthusiasm for public transportation overall. Because if you look at other communities where this has been, right? I know San Francisco is where the corporate offices are, and it's been in Austin, I think, and some other communities. All dealing with the same issues as far as public transportation, and now these other modes, Uber, Chariot, all these other options. So I am really, that's why I'm, I will endorse this tonight, because I wanna see how it plays out over the course of the next several months. As far as cost, you know, to get on the bus stop here and go down to Ferndale, it's two bucks on the Smart Bus, right? So for $10,000, you can get a lot of Smart trips to Ferndale on the bus that's already working and already there. It's already got the bus stops. So, is this an auxiliary service that kind of caters? I'm really excited to find out, and I'm interested, you know, as far as the data points with ridership, when people are gonna be using this, all these factors. That's why I really appreciate the exploratory note, you know, aspects of this. But I do have my concerns long-term. The bus stops in particular, I feel, we have a beautiful bus stop at the northern part, southbound. You know, I would like to see the bus stops for the Smart Service improve throughout our city. So could we spend $10,000 on improving that infrastructure? That's a budgetary item that we talk about every year, and there's appropriate channels for us to talk about that as a group and have the public weigh in on that. Again, this is $10,000 that we already kind of, we already did commit to Ferndale for this project with another name, but, so I have no problem seeing those funds released for that. But I also wanna, you know, explore other ways that we can, you know, bolster the public transportation infrastructure that we already have. And you brought up a great point about the seniors, and, not the seniors, but just people who maybe are restricted in their mobility, but also need to access healthcare. So, and I know Jim has worked with Smart and the City of Royal Oak, and we have the program, right, where our residents, right now, this is, before this, we're even deciding this, can call up, make appointments for Smart Bus, for the shuttle, the Smart Shuttle, pick them up for their medical appointments and stuff. I think it's a five-mile radius, and that's a service that we currently have. We're funding that right now. I would hope that's getting used. I don't know if you guys have any access to ridership numbers on that. Maybe that's something we could look at down the road, but, because to me, honestly, shuttling people back and forth to the bars Friday, Saturday, Thursday night is great, and I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be popular. But there's also people in the community and in the region specifically who need to get to the doctors, who need to get to Myers, who need to get to, you know, get their prescriptions filled. So, again, I'm good with this going forward to March. I'm really excited to kinda March, April, May, review kinda how this plays out. And I would love for the residents to remain engaged as far as the feedback, especially if you're persuading people at that Indiana-Sylvan interchange, just to make sure that people there are comfortable with what's going on. So I would ask, you know, I know that, you know, you feel very, that the lines of communication are open between those particular neighbors and the city. So, that's all I wanna say. I do think, you know, for the next several months, that'll be a program that, you know, hopefully that our residents will use. And again, my concern is really bigger picture. Are we draining resources or enthusiasm for more established modes of public transportation? So that was just where I was thinking on this. Going forward, again, I support this motion, and those are the only points that I wanna make on the record, so.
Well, I think that's an interesting point, where I sort of see it the opposite. It becomes almost like a gateway into bigger transit. You know, it gets people comfortable with, like, getting on something that's sort of like public transit. And so, sort of opening up a thing. I think this, yeah, this is an exciting program.
If I may?
Yes.
I'll also mention that the way Chariot works in other cities is that they actually crowdsourced the routes. So, they figure out where you're at, and over time, the routes adjust themselves to where people want to naturally start. So, the best that you can do to influence the route is to use the app. If you have a smartphone, and if this is approved, I would encourage people to use the app, because that gives Chariot and Pleasant Ridge data to determine where the best place for the stops to be over time. So we may find that that particular stop isn't exactly where people want to be picked up. It's maybe a block over or what have you, and that will be useful information. So, I know I will probably be using it. I'm not actually a bar hopper, but I do store cars between cities, so being able to take another piece of transportation to get to classic cars is probably how I'll be using it. But I do encourage people to give it a try, presuming it's approved.
That's great. Anything else, anyone? All right. Amy, could we call the vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieck?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Perry.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is the City Managers Report. Jim?
Thank you. Construction update. We put an update on the website and on the Facebook page today. But Ridge Road is gonna be closing. It's scheduled to be closing next Wednesday, July 18. That'll be when Ridge Road closes for the start of removals. The contractor is saying that they'll be done and the road will be reopened on Wednesday, August 1st. So it'll be a two-week closure.
That's great.
Yeah. So that'll disrupt everyone's lives on the west side of Pleasant Ridge, because it'll be closed, you won't be able to get across Ridge. There are detour routes that are posted on the website, on the construction update page. We're also gonna have detour signs that we'll be posting around, physical signs to get people around. But, two weeks isn't bad for reconstructing Ridge.
That's great.
Not at all.
That'll be upcoming.
That new median by the school is really nice.
Yeah, it'll look even better when it's, you know.
But it slows you down a lot.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah. And we've already got curb rash on the curbs.
I was happy it wasn't.
Yeah. But when we get the lane striping and the vegetation and everything, you know, it'll look even nicer.
Yay.
Awesome.
So yeah, that's the main thing. I think everything else that's going on in the ice cream social, all of those other events have been pushed down by everyone else, so that's all I have.
Jim? What about the work at Ford Ridge? Redoing the room and everything?
Yeah, that's upcoming. That will be starting after summer camp ends, potentially in later August. We don't know exactly the dates on that yet. We're still in the contractor selection process for that. We'll be bringing a recommendation for contractor, contract, for the City Commission's approval at our August meeting. But yeah, that'll be an exciting project we're all looking forward to, and we're aiming to try to get that room finished, or at least functional, by November 1st, because we've got some November.
The holiday stuff.
Yeah, we've got an election.
Oh, yeah.
And, yeah, we've got, you know, obviously the lasagna dinner and some other, you know.
We'll vote somewhere. We'll vote somewhere. Oh, that's fun.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder, John.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right. Our next and final item is other business. Does anyone have anything they would like to bring to the podium, or? Commissioner Crisieck?
Thanks, Ian. Just tomorrow night, the Pleasant Ridge readers will be discussing Mayflower, a story of courage, community, and war. I was discussing this a little bit early, before the meeting tonight, and it's really a harrowing account of one of the seminal foundation, the community that really, you know, established a lot of mythology about the United States of America. And it's really fascinating. The author really examined not only the perspective of the English settlers, but also the Native Americans who were in that region at the time of the contact there. So, it's really well-balanced and historical account. And we'll be discussing it tomorrow, 7:30 at the Community Center. And that's all I have.
Great. Anyone else? Amy?
So there's an election coming up. Election, August 7. It'll be a pretty big election. People that are interested in obtaining an absentee ballot can do so at any time. Applications are on the website. They're also available in City Hall. If you give me a toll, I can get one out to you. Sample ballots are out on the website if you wanna see what you're gonna be voting for.
Great.
And polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy.
With cookies.
With cookies.
And cookies.
With cookies, of course.
Anyone else? All right. If there is no other business, can we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Excellent. Thank you.
I have to adjourn.